Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Monser Town Council regular meeting on Monday, March twentieth to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Present.
Counselor Mellon.
Present.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Present.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Present.
And Counselor Gardner.
Present. If we could all rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to read a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day now is observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut healing, heating and cooling costs. Moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of a business area and beautify our community. And whereas, trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be proclaimed that the town, that the town council of the town of Monser hereby supports Arbor, supports April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day and encourages its citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And be further proclaimed that the town council of the town of Monser encourages all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Mr. President, I move we, we adopt this proclamation.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed and adopted by the town council of the town of Monser, Lake County, Indiana, this twentieth of, of March, two thousand twenty-three, by a vote of five in favor and unopposed. I hereby proclaim, proclaim the town of Monser recognizing Arbor Day, two thousand twenty-three. Okay, after all that, we move into the public comment section of the meeting. We kindly ask that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your question in the meeting minutes and will refer the question to the appropriate departments or staff for follow-up. Public comment may also be submitted electronically. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council during this section of the meeting? Seeing none, we'll close the consent agenda. We'll move in or move the, close the public comment section and we'll move into the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda.
A second motion.
There's a motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. There is no old business. We will move into resolution twenty-one oh six, which is the allowable cost policy.
Alright, this is from the clerk treasurer's office. And when we had our federal grant audit last year, one of the things they recommended is that we establish for all federal grants, not just ARPA, but ARPA was the predecessor of the word I'm looking for is escaping me, but anyway, so the purpose of the policy is to define what cost can be charged to a federal program. And the memo is here, there's a nice policy attached and as well as.
Very good, there is recommend, recommended action.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt resolution twenty-one oh six as presented.
I'll second. There is a motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. We'll be into item B under new business. This is the final release of retainer for the CCMG or Community Crossing Matching Grant Program twenty-one dash two. Deputy Town Manager, anything to add to the memo?
Nothing to add, no.
Very good. There is a recommendation at the bottom of the memo.
Mr. President, I move to approve the release of retainage in the amount of ninety thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty, ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents to milestone contractors. For the two thousand twenty-two roadway and water main improvements, not Delaware, East Delaware.
Second, there's a motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Letter C, this is the contract award for installation of the flow meters and hydrochloride dosing equipment at the Calumet Avenue Pumping Station. Again, there's a memo from the deputy town manager. Is there anything else to add?
Yep.
Move we award Morrison Construction Company in the contract for installation of the hydrochloride dosing system and flow meters at their quote price of twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars.
I'll second. There's a motion to second, any discussion?
Just noticing the, as was written up in the memo that you called references things, the sort of quite favorable financial terms that Morrison Construction has offered. Have we worked with them in the past?
We have not, no.
So maybe this is a good, I don't want to say experiment, but a first trial of them, so that we might build a stronger relationship with them. They continue to do good work at such a good price.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is arborist service quote. There is a memo from our director of public works, Steve Guntie. He is not here. I don't think he's online. I think it's fairly self-explanatory memo, two-page memo. Is there any question that we want to ask staff prior to making, following Steve's Director of Public Works recommendation?
He's not.
Yes. The Dustin.
I'd like to recommend that the town manager's office send a letter of thanks to Gina Darnell for the years that she's been as our, our, our first. She's well-respected through the Indiana area. I think we were lucky to have her.
She was exceptional. She is exceptional.
She is.
She's just exceptional other places, not here now. By her choice, by her choice.
Very good. There is a recommendation in front of the council.
Mr. President, with a special note that we have proclaimed Arbor Day in the town of Monser, I would move to approve the arborist services proposal for, of forever green for the tree inspection and consultation.
There's a motion to second.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
The only question I had was, my question was, I would, I don't know if we actually asked Gina, Gina, if she had anybody to reverse to.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Right, because looking at this, these are two actual companies that are very much along that, so I don't know if they actually have anybody per se that is an arborist on their team.
You know, if you, if you'd like us to go back, happy to make that call and see if she has a direct recommendation. This is important, but not a matter of urgency.
My only issue was, was that, you know, knowing someone who retires.
Yeah.
You know, in my business, if someone retires or a vendor or whatnot, we don't ask, right, we kind of get the bids from each kind of company on there, that's all.
Okay. Would you, would you like me to hold it as a counsel?
I'm not pushing it. So I mean, that's just my opinion. If you guys think this is fine, that's fine too. That was one question, but.
I, I don't, I think that's probably a good, good idea. She was so good. You would think that she would know others.
Could fill her shoes.
Should fill her shoes, exactly, because I have, you know, wanted to have things examined at my home personally and then called like lawn companies and they're like, oh, we don't really have arborists, but so I don't think it's a bad idea. It's not something that we need to.
Is this pressing, Dustin? We may look for the next.
Dustin, I'm on the line if you can hear me.
Oh, here, here, Director Public Works, he's on the line.
I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't realize you were online. My apologies.
No, that's okay. I appreciate being able to weigh in. If I may, Dustin, is that okay?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, appreciate it. We, no, we did not contact Gina on this matter. She's, I think, been in retirement mode and a little, little difficult to reach. We certainly could do that, as Dustin said. I will say though, we did solicit, I believe it was fourteen, is it fourteen? I listed it in the, in the information, yeah, fourteen other arborists, all within thirty minutes. And honestly, I was very shocked. We only got two, two replies back. Both are very excellent from what we can tell. One was definitely quite expensive. The one that we're recommending, we, we did ironically have some experience with that company on a, on a local property that we needed an official assessment of the trees and we were quite pleased with them. This, this is somewhat of an informal contract, if you will, in that we can really at any point, if we needed to part ways, it would be ve- very easy to do. And it's a very exciting, we're, we're excited to bring an arborist back into our services because we could really see at this stage of, of things that might be needed down the road, not just through public works, but maybe through parks and through the planning department and any other special projects where this arborist, we could get some extra mileage out of this service agreement.
Well, with that said, then I don't have a problem with forever green. I still would feel more comfortable if we tried to reach out to her, Steve, since she is in retirement mode and maybe she can catch up to her at some point. Maybe she can give us a couple other names just in case.
Certainly. Are you asking me to contact her just to have some backup in case we ever, that's fine.
That's my, that's my recommendation.
Will do.
Well, currently, there's, there's a motion on the table to approve arborist services proposal for Evergreen for tree inspection consultant services.
Right, that's, yes, that's the current one.
Okay, yes.
That was just during discussion.
Okay, yes, okay, very.
Very good. Steve, you have a, you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Be formal, start it, be formal.
Okay. Chairman.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, Mr. Guntie, just curious how we, how should we think about the quality of services that are provided for arborists? Is there anything we should be looking at as they come out to do the first few pieces of work with us?
Yes, they, the ones that, both of these are members of one of the professional associations of arborists. And they're going to be, with this particular company, if, if this goes through the, with council approval for Evergreen, would use the, a form that is quite comprehensive in looking at all aspects of, of a tree and so forth. So when it comes to what public works would tend to use the arborist for, it's, we would get a lot of information from the type of form that they use. And then as far as on the consulting services, that would remain to be seen, but I, I think that, you know, they take great pride in their work and they would give a lot of color commentary as to any condition we would consult them on, be it landscaping or if we want to use them for training or whatnot.
Great, thank you. I know councilor Kulturis had mentioned these are landscaping companies. I, I didn't, I wasn't involved in this process at all. We did happen to have, I think it was Evans Tree Service come and do a cap in our backyard and evaluate a tree that we were worried about. So the arborist was, he, he was great, so. I had the same thing with forever green, so. Yeah, so I had no problem with forever green. I've used them before. I just, I just wanted to know some, you know, background or reverse of why. Okay. That's all.
So.
I don't know what was this.
With this. And it sounds like Director Public Works, Guntie, thank you for that information. There is a motion on, on the quarter to approve arborist services proposal from Evergreen for tree inspection in consultation services. Any other discussion? Seeing none?
I think, I just want, want to add one more thing about Gina, because her biggest job of, I'm sure, was when we got a grant to thin out the woods at Heritage Park. And that was a massive, massive job and even directing how to take trees out of woods without damaging the other trees. And there hadn't been a sapling of an oak tree growing in there for eighteen years because there was no sunlight that could reach the bottom of the ground. And just that one job really impressed me.
Very cool.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Letter E, under new business, this is the ordinance eighteen ninety-seven, which is amending Lake Business Center PUD to permit additional warehouse space. Looks like we have planning director Vanderwood here. Thank you.
Yes, what would you like to add to that?
Shall I explain the, okay, so this is a request from the owners of the west half of the Lake Business Center Planning Unit Development for an amendment to the existing ordinance, the PUD ordinance that governs the development of that property. They're proposing to add a link between the south warehouse and the north warehouse, which is approximately nine thousand square feet of additional warehouse space. And then in addition, they'll be adding new truck docks to the west side of that north warehouse. Some new parking areas between the warehouses and some landscaping on, on both sides to and address up the east side that faces Calumet Avenue and then to implement our landscaping standards on, in the parking lot on the west side. Because as I said, this is a planned unit development ordinance. This is a change in their site plan, so it requires an approval of an amendment to that ordinance. This was presented to the plant commission in February and the plant commission voted unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to the town council to approve this change. And I will also just state that there were no remonstrances at that public hearing. So they are recommending that you adopt this ordinance.
Very good, thank you. There is a recommendation in front of the council.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, I move to approve ordinance eighteen ninety-seven, amending the Lake Business Center land unit development to permit nine thousand square feet of additional warehouse space, additional truck docks, new parking areas and landscaping at Lake Business Center PUD at ninety-two hundred Calumet Avenue in accordance with plans submitted under PC doc at twenty-two dash zero two four.
I'm second. Very good. There is a motion to second, any discussion or questions for planning director Vanderwood?
Mr. Chairman, I, as a member of the plant commission, I can just, I know we don't have, oh, I don't know if you got to see the videos. But we did talk, talk about the improvement that it, that it will add as we're going to landscape. There's kind of this like narrow alley. If you're familiar, if you're looking, looking at the building, it's, it's just kind of, it's rough, there's rocks or a few trees, but it's going to improve that quite a bit. And we also, one of the commissioners asked a question if, with the additional truck parking, wanted to know that they were committed to using the new drive that would be coming out of Maple Leaf as to not have more truck traffic blocking Calumet Avenue. And they said that was the plan. So there were quite a few questions asked, but at the end, it seemed like it was going to be better for them, also giving the town some benefits. So I just, for background, so I got that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. And also landscaping that back quarter or once that road back there to the boat.
That's true, yeah.
That doesn't happen, right?
That's right. So when you're taking the bike path.
Drive, yeah, it'll be all landscape background song.
Very good. Other questions or comments from the council?
Just wanted to clarify with Mr. Vanderwood that the, I, I remember as Counselor Mellon mentioned, there was a condition requested to be placed on the PUD that traffic would use Maple Leaf Boulevard. Is that included in this? Yeah, so in response to that comment from the plant commission on the development plan that was submitted and approved by the plant commission earlier this month, which was made, the approval, which was continued upon the passage of the PUD. They did reserve a, a space in the back. It's not identified the exact location where they would connect to a future Maple Leaf Boulevard, but once, once that is constructed, then they'll identify the best location to connect in there and they have committed to using that for their exiting trucks. Yeah, so it's identified on the PUD site plan along with the landscaping that Dr. Kulturitis mentioned. Excellent, though. That will help solve an issue of large semi and trucks turning into, I mean, especially in, in upper times.
Very good, thank you. Other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to resolute, item F on the new business agenda, which is resolution twenty-one oh eight. This is assault purchase for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four snow season. Director Public Works, Guntie, anything to add to your memo?
Nothing at this point, thank you.
President, I move that we approve resolution twenty-one oh eight authorizing the town manager and the director of public works to purchase up to three thousand six hundred tons of treated road salt from the awarded state contractor through on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four state joint purchasing program on rock salt for in dot, report district number forty.
Second, motion to second, any discussion?
Is that my question? I was surprised. It seemed like a light winter year this year, twenty-two to twenty-three. And we used thirty-three hundred and twenty-six tons of salt. Did I, is that just a layman's experience with the amount of snowfall that we had? I was just surprised that it was not as much as we're going to.
Counselor Tulowitzki, if I, if I may, that's a very astute question you've asked. We, we had the same observation. In other words, we used a little more salt this season than last. And we had to, we had to ask ourselves as well, why? And I don't know that we figured it out, you know, at, at this point. Other than it may have been that we had, we were spreading salt during different events, you know, that maybe were pre-icing or that where it didn't snow, but that the temperatures were threatening. And so we laid down salt in those instances that were a little bit under the radar. We also have, I would say, a lot of more inexperienced drivers this year, and it's possible they've been, you know, laying down more salt than, than maybe a more experienced driver might. But so it's just a little speculative right now. We're, we're not sure why, but we think those are, that's what attributes to the increase this year.
Preventative measures.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you for that. I also noticed Punxsutawney Phil lied to us this year. It was sort of snowing in mid-March, so maybe microsections off.
There's a motion and a second on the tape on, but approved. Anything else? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
I have a couple of things under the business that I'd like to address.
Sure.
One is that I would like to have the council move forward in regards to the traffic study for the passing Calumet Avenue. I think it's been two years already. So I think we've gone past the timeframe in regards to starting that study to see if we can justify the expense of doing it in the past. That's one thing that I, you guys have considered. And the other thing that I, I mentioned multiple times at the plant commission and I want to bring it to the council attention too, that prior to the building being, that's being built over on Calumet Avenue, the treadway, I want to make sure that you have the traffic library to go across Calumet Avenue before the building is given the permit to actually open for business. I've mentioned it multiple times at the plant commission. I know we're going to end up paying for it, but community hospital will be paying us back for it. But I think that would be a common issue in regards to Calumet Avenue also. If I get traffic by it up and running before that building is sold. But those are two things that hurts the business.
Okay. Very good. Reports, any reports? I guess, taking those, I, well, anything with reports? Oh, progress reports, any reports?
Yes. The board of safety recently had a meeting and they are actually going to be starting a plan or looking into how we can actually try to possibly when we have the situation in regards to getting policemen and we know someone's potentially going to be retiring, that see how we can try to overlap, overlay, how we can actually try to retain or hold on to a new potential hire while we actually have the older person having retired. So they're going to bring up to us at some point, some, some proposal in regards to that. We have two potential candidates at this point that they're going to be interviewing. We have one more at this point, so we may or may not, you know, we may have two potential good candidates, but we may have someone who retire in the future. If they want to actually try to something like that to us, so. That was one interesting thing that they.
Any other reports in the council?
Counselor Kulturitis? Yes. Regarding some board of safety, I know I've received from a resident situation regarding a fall, so superior ambulance, fall support. I don't know if other council have, though. I heard from Chief Hyde that they were thinking about working with superior to see if that, nine, it's a nine hundred dollar charge. So if someone has fallen, they can't get up, ambulance comes, helps them stand.
They're actually bringing that up and cleaning.
So maybe.
But the interesting thing about that, that I found when I was looking at the report was an all the calls that we had in the past four months, over thirty-four of those calls are specifically for falls. And the number keeps going up every month.
Yeah.
So I thought that was interesting, but he can bring it up at the meeting.
So I, I don't know if there's something that board would look into in regards to how, how we provide that service or the contract with superior or I know we've talked about ARPA funds and you know, some services that we as a department could, could offer. Maybe that's one more.
Yeah, you get to this conversation a little bit. I spoke to Commissioner Dunn, who is the liaison between Superior Ambulance and the Board of Safety. And she meets with Superior Ambulance prior to the Board of Safety meeting. And she, I shared this concern. I have had multiple residents bring it to my attention in the last three to four weeks. It's just kind of a flurry. They must have done all their billing at one time. And she brought it up and talked to Superior about it and she was satisfied with the explanation that they gave. Perhaps at the next Board of Safety meeting, Linda or Superior should share that with the group as a whole.
Very good. Any other reports? Very good, any other reports or portfolio, portfolio reports from the council?
Mister Chairman, uh from the Lake County Solid Waste Management District Board uh meeting. There was, I think as we reported before, pipes burst. And they were installing in the new facility, all of the modern training facilities for children, uh. That all have ruins, so a hundred eighty nine thousand dollar insurance check was cashed, and they expect. That over the summer, they might be able to open that facility, but for the school year, there won't be any. Children.
Board did have, I think, eight members who didn't show up and some who regularly do not show up for meetings. And I did make a suggestion at the end of the meeting, but they did what the Munster Council did. And that was to appoint somebody to attend, then one who regularly appointed people can't get there. And we'll see how far that goes. Close, it's a close forum call.
Okay, any other reports from the council? Uh seeing none, uh the announcements, all town council meetings will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted. Uh the all re- all the redevelopment commission meetings uh are to be immediately following the town council meeting. Our next town council meeting and redevelopment commission meeting will be on April, April third. Uh I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, so second, there's a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. A meeting adjourned. And. School board liaison, there's a new dashboard.
Oh, there's a notice provision.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the redevelopment commission of the town of Munster regular meeting to, to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Schoon.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
And our liaison to the school board, Mister John Castro, welcome.
Thank you.
Very good, um is there any public comment that's to be spoken to the redevelopment commission? Thank, in the public comment section, no, seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda? I will wait, oh, go ahead. I move we accept the consent agenda. I second it, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
The annual report is not part of that.
No, it's not, I'm getting ready for my big speech on that one. Very good, uh seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoon.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. Under new business, there's a redevelopment commission, twenty twenty two, and a report to the redevelopment commission. It's from Clerk Treasure Miss, anything to add to the memo?
No.
Then.
No motions, it's, this is just placed on file.
And I should order the report accepted and placed on file.
Thank you.
Mister. Head Commissioner, Mister something, okay. I was just looking at the font forty four, forty five, noting the eleven million dollars in dispersments. Curious if you could characterize what, what in the year twenty twenty two, like what those went to?
There was the major uh refinancing of debt, and that was considered a dispersment, so when we refinanced at a lower rate while rates were still low. If we can remember that far back, uh we, we did, we did save uh hundreds of thousands of dollars uh with that refinance, but that's considered a dispersment.
It's also, it's the, the counting of investments, so we're moving it from one to another, it's all securely invested, but it's moving. Between investment funds.
Okay, so the sixteen million dollar investment fund. Shipped it around.
It's being shipped around, absolutely. Yeah, yes, optimize is the keyword.
Very good, as I said, the order, uh we ordered the report accepted and placed on file. Uh I think that's all we need to do with that, is are there any reports or announcements to the council or to the redevelopment commission? Seeing none, make motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
Second, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much, see everybody on the thirtieth.